Good evening, I'm calling to approve the meeting. Monday, September 26th, keeping in mind that there are other matters that need to be attended to by citizens this evening. So we will open our meeting with the mowing sound as is tradition. And thinking tonight of John Foley, who is recovering from a procedure and therefore his wife, Beth, will not be with us tonight. Thank you. Jay?
May I have one browse for play? I'd like to make this to apply to the House of Representatives, the Republic, the Constitution, one nation, one government, individual, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you.
We have our agenda before us, which consists of, first of all, consent agenda containing seven items. Is that agenda intact? Have we wished to remove anything and consider it at another time? Or may we consider it tonight? Today? Right now?
At this very moment.
At this very moment. Does that mean you've just made a motion to approve it, Mr. Fiocca?
No, it is not.
Oh.
One thing I was curious about, and I don't know if it means pulling it off the agenda, but we had tabled the minutes-
Right.
-in our last meeting, and I was wondering, did we satisfy some need in tabling that? What was, yeah, so, okay. I'd like to have the, I guess, form that's, when we did that, what, at what time?
There was some wording that the town attorney felt needed to be made with respect to the choice committee members for the Chatham Park Advisory Committee.
Right. I make a motion to approve about the consent agenda.
There is a second. Moved by Michael Fiocca, seconded by Jay Farrell, votes in favor, please indicate by ten five.
Aye.
Disposed. The motion varies unanimously. Notice, by the way, that we have reset the public hearing for the proposed future land use plan for Hillsborough Street now to be heard October 24th. We have no one signed up for the public expression period, and therefore we'll move directly then to commissioner update. It's been a busy time. I had an Economic Development Committee meeting, the last meeting at which we were together, and then on that same day, we had a hospice event at which our mayor, Pro-Tim Penelope Baldwin, made the welcome on behalf of the town of Hillsborough and helped cut the ribbon there at the new hospice at Chatham Park. I missed the UDO meeting on the 19th. I was just expressing to Jeff Jones my sorrow that sometimes there's just so much that our brains and our bodies can do, but I was MIA to the UDO. So, on the 20th of September, I cut the ribbon at New Branch Chiropractic. On the same day, we had a Habitat event in the evening, which was just lovely at the Roadhouse. On the 22nd, it was my pleasure to present the welcome at the Chatham County Agricultural and Industrial Fair. On the 24th, I attended the NAACP Candidate Forum, and tomorrow, there is a design event at which various members of this board and other staff have been invited at Chatham Park. And if you're questioning, Vanessa has the complete list of who's to go where, when. So, anyway, are there other reports from commissioners regarding events either with the fair or the PBA or Triangle J?
I have one thing. Mr. Fiocca himself attended the Chatham County Habitat for Humanity Saturday for a new house to a new family here in Robert Troy. So that was very nice. I'm allowed to say one thing, they, a 1,500 square foot house, they got five bedrooms and three baths. So every inch of that home is being used.
Wow.
Very nice. Very nice.
And I noticed on the news, there was an event regarding Habitat and a wounded warrior, a member of the community for whom a special house is being built to accommodate his disability. So that's very exciting, too. That made the news.
I just have one thing, basically, we already talked about the hospice, it was great. It was a beautiful, beautiful building. Beautiful. But, and I think Chatham Park, all they did in UNC hospitals, I think it's just such an excellent facility for patients and for the caregivers as well. So I'm very, very pleased with that. The fair association, the fair was a success. It rained, but then it was really warm Saturday, so several people attended, and I thank those who did attend and those who wished us well. We certainly appreciate that. So hopefully next year, we'll go forward with an even larger fair and more attendance. Triangle J, I have that meeting on Wednesday, and then Thursday, we have another meeting also.
That's right. We have our joint board meeting with the Chatham County Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education, and that will be at 6:30 in the multipurpose room at the Community College on Thursday, the 29th. Mike, yes, John?
Yes, it really was a special fair of this year. I was able to squeeze in some time after coming back from the coast with my children yesterday, and really enjoyed it, and I'm just so appreciative of that institution and that event. And I'll say that on the Climate Change Committee, this is the Chatham County Advisory Committee on Climate Change, we did meet, and we received a kind of a dry run version of a briefing that was to be delivered to the county commissioners on the question of what means we should use to evaluate the cost effectiveness and energy efficiency of buildings that the county builds. And the recommendation from the committee is that the lead standard, leadership in energy and environmental design should be used. And the reason for that is that there's real tangible benefits and cost effectiveness that can be acquired so long as the process is followed up with commissioning. That's the case with any of these third-party standards. That was a very informative presentation. I think that it's on the county's website, and so that may be something that we want to pay attention to in the future as well, so that we can guarantee that we're going to actually get dollar savings for our energy efficiency investments. Thank you.
And participation in the fair event is always urged, and this year, we were a little bit late getting some of the words out, but the, my lavender won first place. My basil won first place. My oregano was second, as were my okra and my peppers were so pathetic, by virtue of the bad weather, lack of rain, that they received a participant medal. No, that's really bad. Okay. Anything else here with commissioner updates?
I'll just mention that the PBA and the Main Street folks are cheering up for the holidays celebrations, so there will be requests and opportunities for all to volunteer. So if you're interested, get in touch with Maria Parker Lewis, and I'm sure she's got plenty for you to do.
Do we have Santa yet?
I don't know that they have Santa.
All right. Under new business, we have Billy Williams this evening, who will be speaking to us about the First Responders Memorial.
Do I need to go up there?
No, you're welcome.
Screamed, I need to. Appreciate the opportunity to be here. As most of you know, we've worked very hard to try to get the First Responder Memorial done, and we're only able to make the dedication two weeks ago. Have you had a chance to go by and see it in the last couple of weeks?
Yes.
We got the last grass down at 1:00 on Friday, and our service was 10:00 Saturday morning. That's cutting it a little too close, but we made it. I'm here tonight to ask for a couple of small things. As each of you know, I'm sure, there's been zero tax dollars put in that thus far. 100% donations, and some in this room that I know have made personal donations, and we appreciate that. We've had some companies that have made some large donations, $10,000, $15,000. In fact, the landscaping, all the grass, all the mulch, all the dirt, all the shrubs, and all the labor was 100% donated. I don't have a clue how much it costs to me, and just said, don't worry about it, it's a cause worthwhile. The reason I'm here tonight is for two simple requests. We have paid a water bill for two and a half years because there was a water meter at that old abandoned house, and for some reason, we immediately inherited a bill from the town every month, and have never used the water until the last three weeks when we started to landscaping. And I know that everybody is asking you guys for everything. That's just the way the world is now. But we have something in Chatham County, in your town, that does not exist anywhere else in the state. There's a very nice one in Goldsboro, at the military, at the Air Force Base. I think we all could agree, since that's on federal property, our federal tax dollars most likely built in. What we would like to do as a board is request that you guys would take the water bill over and see that it's paid for us every month. Again, I think, and y'all know more than I do, I think it's like $14 or $15 on the minimum. This month, it's 18 because we started irrigation. The landscaper tells us that if nothing goes wrong, by mid-October, we can cut off the sprinklers, because we actually used a 50% dirt and 50% manure mix. It was not packed, it was just laid softly and raped, so the grass is already rooted. I mean, it's, if you looked at it in the last two, four days, it's all green. Where there were some dark spots and edges, it didn't look real good that day, but it's rooted. So, you know, we have a, the gentleman got his company that he buys from to donate, a automatic system that's controlled from a cellphone as to when the sprinklers are off and on. So we're not going to be running them just for pastime. And hopefully, I'm sure we'll have to run them some next year if the weather gets dry, and it be in the first year. But we would like to request that the town pick up that water bill, because again, it's not a lot of money. And we have not been before you guys and ladies or anyone else to ask for public funding. And we've, it's been a battle. I'll just say that, it's been a battle. But, you know, we were determined from day one that we'd put it together from private donations, and I personally think it's beautiful. And I certainly think it is a lot better than the two old abandoned buildings and the trees that used to be there. Part two of my request tonight is a gentleman named Steve Barker that I think is an employee that does the mowing. We have talked to him because he is a first responder, or at least on the board. And Jay helped me out here, if I mispronounced something, stop me, but he's on the board of the Fire Department.
Right, that's right.
And he's been a first responder for years prior to that. So he has said he would be more than glad if the town would give him permission that he would keep it mowed, because again, he understands the dedication that's went into it. And probably, my gut tells me, we'd like to start that starting next season. There might be one mowing now, but we really, we can't mow it until we know it's seeded good, and, you know, because we don't want to mow it until the landscaper says it's time to. But those are the two things that I'm here for. I'll answer any questions, but they're really fairly simple requests, and I don't think we're asking for anything that's unfair, because I am hard-headed, and Jay knows me well enough to know that, plus there's another gentleman sitting over here to my left that knows me well more than one. I see what we want to end going up, but, you know, this project has bumps in the road. And to make a long story short, we changed five board members in one night, the first responders on the board, where they had the true, from the hard experience of wanting to see it done. And as you all know, we lost a first responder this year in Chatham County from Salar City back in January. The first known firefighter to ever lose his life in Chatham County, which he was recognized at that memorial or the dedication the other day. We have put a time capsule in, just for those who do not know, it has all first responders in the county, plus a patch from every one of them. We've put the people that went to New York and picked it up. We've put a list of all the first responders that died that day in New York. And we put the original board members when the board was first put together, and then a list of the current board members. And there is no open date, because before anybody asks people, say, when are you going to open? The answer I give them is if somebody wrecks tomorrow and crushes a wall, we'll be around to fix it back. If it's 150 years and that wall crumbles, then somebody's going to find some history, because we just don't want to open it. We're going to seal the top of it, which is, the top says 444 miles to ground zero, and that time capsule is buried down in that wall, made out of 304 surgical stainless steel. That one little box cost $953. Reminded it was a donation, thank goodness. But with that, I would ask if y'all can cover the water bill, because the 9/11 board feels like we need to stay in control of it as a 9/11 board. Simply because there's always going to be first responders, there's always going to be police, sheriff, firemen, homeless people, and so there's always somebody going to be on that board. And we'd like to stay in control of it, but we do need just a little bit of help. And I really think, I don't know the dollar amount, but I think when you think about it, it's pretty small amounts to be asking for, considering we put, had somewhere around $175,000 worth of donations.
Wow, that's great.
And, you know, just like the wall that we shall never forget, if you see that in the center circle, that cost $13,800, and it was donated 100%. And the company that donated it forbid us to tell anybody they made the donation. They said, because this is not your normal park, it's not what we get asked for every day, it's something that changed the world forever, so we want to be a part. But obviously, I understand they didn't want everybody to know it, because everybody would be coming and asking for some kind of donation. Any questions? I don't want to hold you up, I know y'all got a lot to do.
Mr. Wiens, I just want to thank you for all your hard work, and Mr. Greens, too. I know I worked a couple Saturdays there, but no comparison to hours that you guys just have put a lot of time in there, too. We probably need to thank him also in terms of this.
Well, that's very true. He's went through hip surgery, and his wife's had two cracked vertebrae and two back surgeries in the last four months, or five months, those three surgeries. So he's, but yeah, some of you went by and seen him sitting on his rear sliding around because he couldn't get down on his knees, but he was that dedicated to help us, you know, make it come together.
Thanks for reminding me of that, Jay.
Thank you so much, Billy Williams. We greatly appreciate your work as well as the work of others, and let us talk with our managers so that we can figure out exactly how to treat your requests.
Jay, fair enough.
Well, I can almost assure you that we'll take care of this.
Thank you very much.
I fully understand the request. It sounded as though you think you're going to need to irrigate the facility for this season and next, for everything to take root. Do you think you're going to need water beyond that?
I have no idea what the weather's going to be.
I know.
I mean, I don't mean that to be smart aleck, but, you know, if the weather is good, no, very little wants it gets seeded, but if we have a drought like we've had in some years past, we want to make sure it stays green, because that's what really sets that whole thing off to me, is that nice grass.
And this is clearly a facility that's open to the public.
Absolutely.
Right.
The old board, and I haven't said it here, they may throw something at me, but the old board had this rainstorm, they were going to put a fence all the way down the sidewalk, and I'm like, wait a minute, all we're doing is telling people, don't get around it. I mean, it's like fisting them out, or like holding the candy from the kid jerking it back. And so that's been scratched, we're definitely not putting the fence, because it's open to the public. If you've been by at night, the flag is lit at night all the time now. I was a pet peeve I had. Jay, you've heard me fuss about that. I've had a pet peeve about that flag. That flag is what we all better be remembering and standing for. It is lit now at night. The other is lit from dark till around 11:00 or 11:30, and they're on a timer. So as the days get shorter, we can set it to be at six hours just to the fore to make sure it still stays lit till around 11:00 or 11:30. This time, the board feels like that's enough, it's time for, you know, letting it dart, and nobody needs to be there. That way, if a first city is crew comes by and sees somebody, they can make sure that they're not doing something to it.
Is that done with the solar array that's out there?
That is. And that, again, I could talk for two hours, no, I could talk for a week, because I feel like I've been eating, breathing, sleeping it for three years. But, you know, it's, it was right at $15,000 in that solar system. And at this point, we've paid nothing. Even the man that come out of Raleigh to do the battery, hook up and out, he made no telling me trips from Raleigh. He said, you don't owe me nothing, you don't owe me gas, that you're doing something that's not been done anywhere else. And I'm probably a little partial, but I guarantee it's the best one in the state that was funded by volunteers and donations, and it might be one of the best ones in the nation that didn't have any tax dollars put in it. And yes, I am partial to it, but I think it's just beautiful.
Mr. Gruceback, is this something that the board could go ahead and vote on, or do we need direction?
I think, I think if you want to give us, maybe give us some latitude to come out with an arrangement, I think the cleanest way to go about this would be to actually, would be to actually have a real clear town line of control to that property, be it through a lease or through ownership or something along those lines, which I think we would have an interest in doing, because it is a park, and it could be, that way we could sort of treat it and maintain it as a park, and I think that gets us over some of the issues of the water bill and things like that. So I'd like to talk to Mr. Hesse for maybe a minute or two on this. But I fully agree, it turned out it far exceeded my expectations for it, and I think it's a good use of public money, and I think there's a way to go about doing it.
Okay, very good.
And it is, if you need a copy, we have a lease from the county, or we leased that, because it was originally county property, if you know, and we have a 99-year lease. So it's assigned lease to the First Responder Memorial Board. So if you need the copy, they have it.
Yeah, we'll figure that out. I can't talk to them.
You got, I've got my cell number, you can get in touch with me, I can even have the copy here or bring it, whatever you need. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Paul Horn, the appointment of members to the board of Parks and Adviser and Recreation Advisory. Thank you.
Yes, I've also invited the chair of that board, Megan Bolachak, to help me present this item.
Nice to be here tonight, thanks for having me.
Thank you. So as the memo states, the membership of the board has, many of them have expired, and we also have two new applicants. One is Bridget Perry, who you'll often see along with Michael Fiocca, running in hazardous blizzards and rain and things throughout the, throughout town. She's a very dedicated runner, and-
And a golf player.
Yes, committed to athletics and a mother of two. And Noah Becker, who's a downtown business owner, employs, I don't know, five or six people, has a branch in Seattle, and is also, was instrumental in the development. He ran Work Cruises and got volunteers for the disc golf course, and really put a tremendous amount of time and energy into seeing that project come to completion. So, the, what the board is being asked to consider is reappointment of the existing members. I think that's valuable for institutional memory and continuity with the board. And since there is, we do have more applicants than the size of the existing board, we're asking that you also consider increasing the size of that board, one member to accommodate that person who's interested. The term limits and when they would expire are indicated on, in the memo.
Are you thinking adding a in-town membership?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So that gets us up to seven.
Right.
I think another thing that we'd worthwhile to do now is, I know years ago, I can't remember if it was two or three years ago, the board used to be, I think, eight.
That's correct.
And we changed it to six, but we never changed the definition of what was a quorum. So I think it'd be prudent to go ahead and say that a majority of the numbers present as a quorum do not actually have a number, because, you know, right now, it says six numbers are a quorum.
I think that was a bylaw change, and I think that was adopted, and I think it was half plus one, which is essentially more majority.
I don't recall that happening, because I was concerned about it as of late, but if that's been solved, then I think that's appropriate.
That's probably been going at half plus one.
I think the charter of the board doesn't have that correction- I think the charter of the board doesn't have that correction, so it may just be clerical thing of modifying our ordinance.
If that's the case, we can certainly bring back a consent item for you to officially plus.
Mr. Horn, I do not have the application. Did you mean send applications to the...
They were in the memo packet.
I don't think we have a packet.
I can certainly provide you with a copy now.
I have a copy in my...
In fact, I have several copies here. I have three more, sir.
representative be reappointed and then Bridget Perry added as another member. With those expiration dates shown down below, and reappointment would flow from this year to next year. For those who are expiring in '16, would we wait to reappoint those, or would we go ahead and appoint them now for another term?
They would all need to be reappointed at this time, but they do have staggered terms, and they're two-year terms.
Yeah, okay.
Paul, you've got a pretty good turnout for your advisory boards, and is everybody fairly generous?
By and large, we've got one member who was pregnant this year, and that's, you know, can't say that didn't factor in. She's had to miss some childcare. What's your...
She's very enthusiastic.
Yes, that makes up for it.
She's very good.
Yeah, I think overall, we have had a bit of turnout at our meetings. We always have a couple of months that are, like July or kind of the summer months, we always kind of lag in that end. But besides that, we have had...
And typically, like this board, the pair of us has typically foregone December and July, and really lately, we've had so much going on that we've had meetings, and even if we knew we weren't going to make a quorum from people being on vacation, we'll have informal meetings. And we've had, when we do that, particularly this summer, there was a string where we didn't quite meet. Well, you know what? We didn't, not that we didn't meet quorum so much, that we had joint board meetings. So we had one joint board with the UDO, and that was the pair of meeting. We had one board meeting looking at Chatham Park's open space meeting downtown. So we had a series of unorthodox meetings. We try to provide not official minutes, but staff notes that say, here's what we did on these months, just to remind everybody as they come back of where we've been and where we're going.
What's the special of the board? So you want to increase it to seven?
Well, I'm putting that before you as a consideration.
Okay. Motion to do that now? Okay, I would like to make the motion to increase the number of members on Parks and Recreation to set from six to seven. Moved by Pamela Baldwin, seconded by John Vonage. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Is there a further motion on the insertion of, as revealed, as you said in the memo, Noah currently lives in town but will soon be out in the ETJ?
That's my understanding.
So are you suggesting that he take the current vacancy of the ETJ?
That's correct. And whatever that term that he was filling, that would correspond with when his term expires, and I don't actually have that in front of me anymore.
Seventeen.
Seventeen.
Yeah.
Do you know what his timeframe is on relocating?
I think he said it was before February, and he was thinking sooner.
I'll make a motion that we reappoint all the current members and the two members recommend, or two folks recommended, Noah Becker and Bridget Perry, to fill the terms designated.
Seconded, moved by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Pamela Baldwin. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Paul remains at the podium because the next order of business is an update on the downtown kiosk.
So the board asked for guidance on kiosks downtown. Chapel Hill was kind enough to share with me their designs of the kiosk that they use, which you can see pictured there. I consulted with several firms and got the lowest prices, which are indicated here, should you choose to do these. And the prices vary, it's based on three kiosks, and varies by material that's used and their manufacturer. Aluminums would be, aluminium, as our British friends say, would be $5,000 for three kiosks. Powder-coated steel, matching the color of our current street furniture, would be $3,500 for three. And the stainless steel version with the satin finish would be $7,600. Price doesn't include shipping or installation, it does include taxes. They also provided just very broad general guidance on possible places to put them. The first would be in front of Elizabeth's Pizza to kind of draw that as kind of the northern edge of our downtown. The owner has talked about in the past doing a facade grant program and possibly taking down the old gas station partition there and doing some, it sounds like fairly substantive, and I can't give a timeframe on that because I don't know. I've put in here also that we may want to consider doing a sidewalk project there as well at some point in the future to match the bricks of downtown and perhaps connecting that to our community house, which is, you know, a block away, tying that more into downtown. A middle one, I'm proposing in front of the Woodright Shop, in what I call kind of the no man's land that's established by the little metal railing around the signal light. And that would be a temporary location until the larger street scape project gets done, but you might still be able to incorporate it there or elsewhere in that general area at that time. The good thing about that is that it's not taking up real estate, which isn't already And I should mention that any of this digging downtown is going to be fraught with, you know, potential underground utilities, even with 811 locate. We still want to have whoever installed these be very careful, maybe get archeologists to come with toothbrushes. I'm joking, but just be very careful because you never know what's down there, and you certainly wouldn't want to hit anything going in. And the third location would be somewhere in the former town square, current town parking or county parking lot, to be coordinated with the Main Street group and DOT in that project. So those are, that's the, really, the extent of what I researched in providing information to the board. There's certainly other options available to you. I think the Chapel Hill ones are relatively bomb-proof. They, of course, have to deal with championship hooliganism and buyers and everything else, so they should withstand the elements and dailies fairly well.
That sounds suspiciously as though you're saying our hooliganism are not champions.
Well, we have something to aspire to now.
Do you believe that the complexities of installing this are beyond public works, or...
I shouldn't think so. That might be a really good group to do it because they would be, you know, more responsible for the implications if they were to hit something.
So the powder-coated steel, I think that would match the materials of benches and...
That's correct.
For me, that makes a lot of sense. I also like this. I should have just done the opposite.
Yeah, I agree. We also, the only thing I'm, like you said, I'm concerned about insulation because sometimes insulation can be as much as product. So, I mean, we need to make sure if our town is going to install it, the best that the company installs it, we need to make sure we have a price before we move forward.
But I think we should also be prepared for the fact that they're probably going to get installed twice.
Well, one thing is that this design, you're able to pull up the whole unit. So there's a sleeve, the post fits onto the sleeve, and then it's locked in. So yes, hopefully, they will be installed twice, and that's a good thing.
Yeah.
Is the board in a position to make a decision tonight about any of the issues?
I would be most definitely willing to make a motion to purchase the powder-coated steel units. And I think it would be great to involve the Main Street program in trying to locate because I think Paul's got good locations. I'd like to get their bottom line.
Sure, and that was my expectation as well, and these were just very broad general things. And Jeff Jones mentioned a good point of asking whether they would in fact fit within the one on Salisbury Street, and honestly, I don't know, but I'm sure that's something that could be worked out if not. But a good question.
But it's also right near the existing bulletin board, which is locked and encased there on Salisbury Street. So people who had gotten used to checking that board could then be just right there at the kiosk, so that would, you know, that kind of familiarity would be good. So, Michael Fiocco, are you making a motion that we purchase three kiosks for $3,500 and involve the Main Street organization in the location of those three kiosks?
Yes.
Is there a second? Move by Michael Fiocco, seconded by Pamela Baldwin. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you very much, Paul.
Thank you.
Our second item of old business is an update regarding the Chatham Park Additional Elements Review Committee. Jeff Jones.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the board. I wanted to give you a quick update on last week's meeting with orientation meeting with the Chatham Park Additional Elements Review Committee. We met last Tuesday night on the 20th, and it was sort of an orientation meeting. We were there for an hour or so, and the goal of that meeting was to elect a chair, to elect a vice chair and a recording secretary. Mr. Nos was elected chairperson for this board. Mr. Wayne Britt was selected vice chair, and the recording secretary is going to be mismade, and she has agreed to do that. We have 13 members who have accepted their appointments. 13 members, one did not accept. That would be, maybe there was 14 members originally. 14, that's correct, 14. One did not accept, so we have 13 members that have accepted their appointments. Tyson Miller was the one committee member who was appointed who did not accept. This board could elect to keep the 13. That seems like a manageable number, or you could revisit that 14th position if you so choose. During the meeting, we discussed how minutes would be taken for this committee, and Chatham Park has offered to hire a court stenographer for this committee to take the minutes, and the committee took their offer to do so. And if there's no hesitation from this board, staff will work with Chatham Park to hire an independent court stenographer to take the minutes of this meeting, of these meetings. The committee has chosen to meet every other week, as discussed in our last meeting. Their meetings will generally be on Wednesdays, starting next week on the 5th of October, and we will continue meeting every other Wednesday through February, as the town board has suggested. I do believe that there's one meeting, the second meeting, in December. I have scaled that one off because it's around the holidays, and we will only meet once in December. So the idea is that Chatham Park and this committee will work together to review four elements at a time over the next six months or so to get the recommendation from the committee. Starting at the next meeting on October 19th, Chatham Park will begin a presentation on phasing, parking, and loading signage and lighting. The committee will then hear the presentation, be able to ask questions of Chatham Park. Hopefully, they're doing homework leading up to this meeting next week. And the focus will be on those four elements only. And then once we get, they'll hear the presentation, we'll get back together in two weeks, and then have a full discussion of the board about what we've heard, what they've read, and hopefully, from that point, be able to have recommendations on those four elements for you all. And then we would subsequently go down the line for additional four, and then the final four sometime in late January, early February timeframe. The idea is that we will, that the committee, along with staff and any consultants that we might have, be ready to tackle these first four elements, and that at the end of the committee's work, that we would then be ready, potentially, to hold a public hearing, and then send the planning board, and then on to, back to you all for action. And I've laid out a schedule for that. That sort of wraps up this process of the additional elements sometime in early April. Typo in the memos of March, but it should be April 10th for the action on fruit three. That would certainly gives us a calendar and schedule to strive for. I think it does give the committee enough time to fully hear and then discuss the presentation from Chatham Park. This first set is what the committee thought would be the easier ones to kind of get through, and that's why there's not as many meeting dates on this first set, as you see that there's at least four meeting dates for groups two and three, and those could be extended out to more meetings if we need to. And those could be extended out to more meetings if we, if we need to. But that's sort of the game plan from the committee's standpoint, and we just wanted to give you an update on that and tell you where we'll get busy next week. And generally, the meetings will be starting at seven, will be here in this, this room, and go generally for a couple hours.
And the presentations that will be made by Chatham Park are akin to those that gave at their downtown office to the public.
That's correct.
So those of us who were not able to go to those meetings might want to sit in on those as well.
That's correct. You all are more than welcome to join us.
What time are meetings?
Seven. And I think Alice is going to be posting them on our town calendar on the, if she's not already done so for the next week's meeting.
So we had hoped to have a report on our second meeting in February. So this is spilling beyond that.
Um, committee wraps up their work on February 22nd.
Yeah.
And we hope, we set a public hearing on that, the next board meeting, which is March 6th, for the March 20th timeframe. So in essence, the committee has wrapped up their work by the end of February. And you will have all the recommendations. We're just going through the motions on the last set to hold the public hearing, go to planning board, and then on to back to you all for, for action. So I do believe that we, that the committee is going to meet that goal of giving you all their recommendations by the end of February. It's just the adopting or approving those, those last sets will spill over a couple of weeks.
So do you envision a, the first public hearing to include all of the elements?
I don't. I think that we could probably do these, the first four and then have a public hearing, the second four, have a public hearing, and then the final four and have, so essentially there'll be three public hearings on those, on those elements.
Okay. Apparently, I did not read through.
That's okay.
Okay.
Yeah, that's the idea. It breaks it up for, for all of us. It breaks it up for you, you all, to be able to focus on those three, on those four elements and hold a public hearing and not have 12 at one time because that could be, that could be a lot.
Jeff, could you just kind of let us know email or either a meeting when the Chatham Park will present their presentation at what meetings?
Yes, sir. Um, yes. So the next one is, I should have asked you those, but the next one is going to be the 19th. Chatham Park will be presenting. And then for group two, it'll be the first meeting, it'll be November 16th. And then group three, it'll be January 18th.
Okay.
And those, those presentations will correspond with those three bullets above. And, you know, all the while, staff is going to not only be working on the elements that the committee's working on, but hopefully, we're going to be engaging with consultants if we need to and other staff and sort of by the time we hit February, you've, we've got a full package for this board to consider. From consultants and staff and committees and planning board members and all, that you'll have a big, a big pot of comments and recommendations to choose from.
Jeff, I'm sorry. Could you please repeat those dates that are Chatham Park presentations?
Okay. November, I'm sorry. Actually, October 5th is the first one. Is that, that will be the first meeting for Chatham Park to do the presentation. And then the 16th, this is the first meeting dates on each group there. So October 5th, November 16th, and January 18th.
Very good. Thank you. Have we got police and fire looking at the additional elements?
Not yet, but that has been a suggestion by us, by us board, and that is going to happen, yes.
How does the board feel about going with the 13 members who are currently appointed?
Yes.
We need a motion for that to change the, we had a resolution.
I think it would be better if you made a resolution to amend, a previous resolution to change it from 14 to 13.
Would anyone like to make a motion to resolve that we drop the number back to 13 from 14? So moved. Moved by Pamela Baldwin, seconded by Michael Fiocco. Those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, board. And it'll either be myself or the chair who will be giving you regular updates as to the committee's work. And I'll keep you apprised as to attendance as well.
Great, thank you. We are now at number three on our old business, and that's Ron Brice updating us on Sanford-Forsyth agreement. I thought I saw Michigan football.
Okay. What, what I'd like to do tonight is just kind of revisit some of the stuff I've updated in previous meetings in one place with a little bit more attention given to the, to the draft documents such as it is. Mention a little bit of an overview in terms of basic terms and rights that have been discussed at this point with regard to the Sanford-Forsyth agreement. There's a couple other assumptions, I guess, that I put under purpose here, and that's that, that's that, you know, we have an understanding that there's, there's a review of some technical things that you guys will be doing in the upcoming weeks. We, as you recall, scheduled utilities workshop on October 13th. We're going to go into some of the technical aspects of it. We're not at that point in time. I would add, given that we're dealing with two and a half hours at that meeting, I wouldn't recommend that we go into legal or financial information at that point in time. Just kind of, just kind of hone in on what are the best and faults of the treatment issues and the water improvement issues. And then certainly a lot of money of time to get into some of the other weekly financial issues at some point over the course of the next month or so. And I'll talk a little bit briefly about those too when we wrap up. It also assumes that there's going to be necessary approvals on a number of other items, that being in addition to, in addition to if you, if you choose this agreement, also there would be another agreement with Chatham Park with regard to the revolving fund and its, given Chatham Park's relationship with revolving fund and how the construction is guaranteed. And, and so there'll be, there'll be more discussion and more need to, if appropriate, approve that document as well. And then also too, in, in upcoming meetings, I believe we'll be looking at, following utilities workshop, we'll be looking at DER in, in, once again. And then, and then we'll have other things from the LGC and from revolving fund that we'll be reviewing as well. So there are, as I say, plenty of moving parts with this. This is really kind of the first thing that we're, that we're looking at because if not for Sanford's willingness to take on our wastewater, then this treatment option really wouldn't exist. So Sanford has to have, have the wherewithal and the willingness to do it. We have to have the wherewithal and the willingness to kind of agree to some of the terms that they're talking about. And so this is really the first of those, of those moving parts that we want to review. And so without much more, more to do, I'll get into that. As we go along, feel free to just speak up if there's something that we might want to talk a little bit more about. Take notes. Certainly, this isn't the last time that we'll be talking about it. So we'll have plenty of opportunities to mark this up and then provide feedback to Sanford. And certainly, some of the things that I'm going to show you tonight, I have some notes on that, and I think Mr. Messick will have some notes on as well, as far as what we want to come back to with Sanford. So this is certainly not anything that's representative of a finished document or one that I would even necessarily, you know, 100% approve at this point. It's just kind of the way of the land as it stands right now and to kind of, kind of check in with it. I put this, I put this slide up just, it's, what this is, is the Jordan Lake Partnership Interconnection. And it's, I guess, to kind of give an idea, Jordan Lake Partnership, some of you, you know, may or may not be familiar with it, but it's, it's a group that's been working on, working on water allocation from the Jordan Lake at some point in the, in the future. And these, these interconnections here, I believe, you know, many of them currently exist in the Triangle area. And what I'm trying to do here is, I guess, just sort of give an idea that the interconnections and partnerships with regard to, particularly with water, you know, are fairly common in the Triangle area. And I think, you know, that this is an area of the country coming from the outside, initially from another part of the country. This is an area of the country that has, I think, prided itself and worked really well on collaboration with providing utility services. So it's something that, that's been done before. Wastewater treatment is, you know, is another issue entirely and has a whole other set of engineering challenges, but, but it's definitely something that, that folks in our neck of the woods have worked on extensively over here. What I did was, it took, it's took almost verbatim, I mean, the words you're going to see in here are the words that are literally in the latest agreement that we have from, that we have from Sanford. And this is, I'm not going to go word for word on each one of these, but, but this is obviously standard. Our lawyers in the room will recognize this portion of the contract, essentially setting, you know, setting the, the initial terms. We need wastewater. Sanford has the ability to treat wastewater. There's, there's a mutual interest to do it. And that's what we're establishing here with this part. I don't think there's a lot of debate there. So in consideration of that, Sanford would agree to provide up to 2 million gallons per day for their sewer use ordinance. Pittsburgh would pay for the, pay for the treatment of the 2 million gallons per day. Also down in this last, this last sentence of paragraph two here, you'll see that notes that Pittsburgh will pay a charge of reserved capacity of Sanford's water reclamation to sell near their wastewater treatment plant in accordance with this contract. And that, that sentence essentially would obligate us to paying a portion of, when they say reserved capacity, that means they would be asking us to reserve the use of 2 million gallons, up to 2 million gallons per day. That fee that we would pay for reservation of that capacity would be tie barred almost directly to the upper proportional amount of the debt that that 2 million gallons per day incurs on the overall remaining debt of what's, what they owe on their overbuilt wastewater treatment plant. It's clear as mud on that so far. That's, we've talked about that as like a debt fee or capacity fee. That's what that's saying right there in basic terms. Both parties agree that the term in the contract would be 30 years. It's a number that, a number that we, we selected. There are different ways probably to tackle this, perpetuity, what have you, but that's, that's what we painted on to this point. The, the one item here, the one, the other number that I would point out that I probably would suggest changing is that if you look down here in the middle of the paragraph, if you follow where my arrow is, the, in terms of terminating the contract, if either party should terminate the contract, it's stipulating that there has to be at least eight months in advance of the actual termination. And I think that should be a longer term.
Saying 18 months?
Yeah. So that's just what they threw at us initially. They, I think we're kind of poking their finger in the wind, and I don't know that there was a lot of science that went along with that. I think there needs to be a longer term because as we all know, it takes a lot. Takes a village to raise a child. It takes a long time to build a wastewater treatment facility. So 18 months may not be sufficient.
Right. Can I go back to, I think, one of the previous pages that talking about paying a share of the reverse reserved capacity? Is it fair to say that all users of that facility are paying that fee?
That's an excellent question. I don't believe the agreement would gold standard require them to pay a share of the fee. Now that said, when I brought that up, a current moment of silence, everyone said that that was actually a lesser scale than what we're proposing. Goldstein is, is requesting, Goldstein is actually, you know, deserving, I guess. It's in, it's in the five figures rather than in the millions. So for whatever reason, that wasn't, Goldstein wasn't required of that.
If, if the capacity is not reserved, then there's no assurance that they will continue to exempt and treat your wastewater.
Right.
So if you're willing to take a chance with that, I mean, they got a 2 million gallon plant, gallon a day plant. They're using four. So this will be one-sixth of that total capacity, 2 million gallons a day. So if you want to make sure that they all continue to take 2 million, then the only way to do it is to buy the capacity.
Well, let's look at it from the perspective of just a regular user of the system. Let's call it-
A regular out of town user has no rights at all. They're under no obligation to serve an out of town customer.
Understand. Obligations aside, if a commercial shopping center wants access to that plant, they ask for an allocation from Sanford. Sanford provides it. I think associated with that allocation is some fee that I'm sure represents some kind of debt service on the entire plant.
You can work it that way?
Yes. Okay. I doubt that that end user has to, that there is any limitation in time on that end user's use of that capacity for that fee. And yet, this is suggesting that we would be one of those end users, the out of town type, that's going to pay the fee and then be limited to 30 years of access to that plant, which they could conceivably then sell to somebody else if we couldn't come to an agreement at that 30-year time. So just something to, it's a connection I'm seeing.
Well, he hasn't gotten to that portion of the contract. It deals with termination and expiration of it and what might happen to capacity. We've not really gotten that far in a discussion about that.
Is Holly Springs in there too? Aren't they buying from Sanford at this point?
I don't know.
Okay. Well, this is kind of, I mean, continue to, continue to ask these questions and sort of feedback is what we're kind of, kind of looking for here. That was, those were the, I think we just looked at this one there, 30-year term. There are different ways to look at it. I think termination would be, the termination period of 18 months to me feels like it's, it's narrow. That, that was, that term length was actually discussed with Sanford and Mr. Messick, I guess. We had a meeting with them a couple of weeks ago. So I think there's, there's some possible on, on the 18-month issue. 30 years, we just haven't really broached it. I think initially, we talked about maybe in perpetuity or something along those lines. I, I don't know that that would be a sticking point. Exclusivity, this is, this is one, this is one that's a little bit more complicated. Sanford here is looking to, is looking to be the sole provider of wastewater treatment to Pittsburgh. So any wastewater that Pittsburgh generates- So any wastewater that Pittsburgh generates, Sanford wants to treat. One of the things that we've discussed recently is the, well, a couple of things we've discussed recently. First, I think first and foremost on some of our minds is the amount of allocation that we have available, amount of paper allocation that we have available in terms of our existing plant. And how would we, how would we handle development requests from either residential, new residential customers or new commercial customers or industrial customers? What we would, what we would have to do, what could we do to increase the approximately 63,000 gallons per day of application of paper flow that we currently have? One of the methods that would, that would allow us to get through that period between where we are now and where something like the Sanford Forest Main would allow us to increase that capacity would be to, would be to work with Chatham Park on their reclamation, I say their reclamation facility that you heard a presentation on, I believe at the last meeting. The permitting on that, as Mr. Baldwin from the Kimmel Creek discussed, the permitting on that, the approval of the permitting on that reclamation facility would allow the town to increase its capacity and then also would allow treatment capacity until such time as the Forest Main was to Sanford was operational, assuming we can go that direction. So given this, Sanford is interested in allowing for that Chatham Park reclamation facility to operate, but once, in a nutshell, once the facility were to begin, or once the Forest Main were to begin operation, once water was actually, wastewater was actually being sent to Sanford via the Forest Main, then Sanford here in this letter, yeah, Sanford here in this last, in this last sentence of this paragraph is suggesting that there be no other treatment, no other treatment beyond reuse purposes only. So the Chatham Park facility would then, would then continue to treat wastewater, but then it would simply pump it back into Pittsburgh, other parts of Chatham Park or wherever the customers were as reuse water. And so, so that's, I think, I think that's an issue even on the Chatham Park side that we've got to talk a little bit about, make sure everyone's on the same page before we move forward on that. Point of delivery, this is fairly standard, fairly standard, probably fairly simple, hopefully. I don't know exactly how large the Forest Main transmission line is as I sit here and talk to you, but I'm sure we'll find out. But this essentially means that it'll be delivered through a Forest Main, through less stations, and that you can see in the last sentence of the paragraph, Pittsburgh is responsible for the easements, encroachments, and permits necessary for construction and the maintenance and operations facility after the mutual agreed point of delivery. So Pittsburgh is responsible for construction, Pittsburgh is responsible for the maintenance. Pittsburgh is basically responsible for everything leading up to the point at which we deliver the wastewater to Sanford. Pre-treatment, pre-treatment program. We don't, we haven't, and we haven't had really a robust official pre-industrial, what's called an industrial pre-treatment program in our wastewater collection system we're at our wastewater plant here in Pittsburgh. And what Sanford is essentially doing here is looking to make sure that the wastewater that we send to Sanford meets the standards that are required by the state and by the city of Sanford for them to be able to treat wastewater that goes into their system. And pre-treatment programs are typically used in larger systems that have a variety of different uses, particularly industrial and commercial, that might be, might have the risk of putting, you know, dangerous chemicals and other things into the wastewater stream that are very difficult for wastewater plants to treat and then dispose of. And so what Sanford wants to do is to, is to make sure that we have a pre-treatment program that is operational and allows, I guess prohibits that the harmful materials from going down to Sanford. Now, we have, having said that we don't really have a robust program, we have the ability to create a program. The mechanics of doing that are relatively simple and administrative. We would just simply have to maintain, you know, some level of certification and personnel or have the ability to do it, even though we may not have the direct need for the pre-treatment program. For all intents and purposes, since the chicken plant went, there hasn't really been that kind of focus within the Pittsburgh water system. We do have, you know, some occasional issues that we work on as needed with, you know, say, local restaurants and maybe the brewery, but that's relatively light, fairly near the bottom. What we're talking about here is something that would have to be programmatically put in place. It's doable and it's certainly understandable from their standpoint. I would agree with this. Everybody got a, kind of an idea of what we're doing here so far? Any questions? Need to check in? Do a holler?
Is that like grease trap kinds of issues that pre-treatment?
It's primarily designed for significant industrial users. And except for biofuels, I'm not aware that we have an industrial user unless it's the brewery. It would be quite volatile to that.
At present, it's not my impression that we do.
So it doesn't involve any actual analysis on our part?
Yes, could.
It does involve analysis, sampling, analysis, data transmission to them.
They want to see that.
They want to know what's coming down the pipe, Adam.
Right.
Sure.
And where would that be done? At the old plant?
At the industry, industry that's generating waste.
Let's say you have a factory. You would work with, our staff would work with somebody at the factory at the point of discharge. There would be controls in place at the factory. They would have personnel on staff that would hopefully be trained to do this. They would, at their expense, on their end, maintain their mechanics or, you know, their widgets in order to keep the bad stuff out of our waste stream. We would have staff that would check in and kind of maintain communication, relationship, paperwork, any technical advice we could give. And like you said, continue to monitor at that point. It's like Mr. Messick said, it's nothing that we had to do, at least recently, in my knowledge, with the exception of a few isolated incidents. And that's, you know, that's something every system, you know, will have to do from time to time. And honestly, we don't have a lot of trouble even with the restaurants. So I don't want to give anyone that impression, so.
Could that be a significant cost to biofuels or?
No.
To have to pre-treat-
I think they're already pretty much doing that, is what I understood.
We don't, we haven't.
I mean, early on in the state, they learned their lesson.
That's the way, that's the way it works. Yeah, unfortunately, so I-
But if the bugs are killed in the plant, then that's a real problem for everyone. And so if that, if the parameters that are, if somebody required a test board in Sanford are out of whack, then they're going to go look upstream to see where it's coming from. And we need to know whether it's coming from us or not. It's going to require an effort on our part to be able to monitor that stuff, assuming we ever have a significant industrial user.
Or that could be requirements of that facility to provide test results to the town.
Well, I think the town needs to have the option to go do the testing itself.
I agree.
Yeah, pre-treatment program would have a protocol for doing all of that. And that's what we need to answer. We're not the first people who've done it. I, you know, it's, it's just something that would have to be done. And, you know, from my, like I said, from my standpoint, we're talking, Heather and I were talking to Haverford today and that was one of the questions that they wanted to know as they start figuring over, figuring in overall costs is that, what's involved with that? And it's just, it's a marginal cost that, you know, is something that we can accommodate, I think, within a couple of toes down. It's not, it's not anything that's going to shut us down to have a pre-treatment program. It's something that the system's due. And maybe we don't, maybe we don't need it for quite a while. Maybe we will need it sooner than later, but at least we'll have the program.
And you have a sewer use ordinance that already has that kind of provisions in place. You know, we just don't have a customer for it to work on. So it would just need to be implemented in the event of new customers who qualify. And then have Sanford looking over your shoulder and make sure that Pittsburgh does it. And there are all sorts of opportunities for, I mean, there's another part of this contract that would, if, in fact, Pittsburgh does contribute to some violation of the limits, then there's going to be a surcharge for that. And of course, you know, Pittsburgh's, because these customers are Pittsburgh's customers and on the collection side, you want to, you know, surcharge the customer for violating the parameters as well. So at any rate, it's a maybe.
Which ways to address that?
You should surcharge them.
Well, it seems like we're-
Or cut them off.
We have a vested interest in knowing what we're pumping from our plant.
The only reason, the only reason I just coughed at a little bit is if, if, that we still have a significant I problem, for example, at that point in time, I don't know that I'd want to pass that type of a cost on to individual customers. But, I mean, one way, you know, okay, I don't disagree with what Mr. Messick's saying, it's-
Got to protect the bugs.
Yeah.
Brian, this brings to mind a question that someone shared with me, the notion that some towns, if they have a remote wastewater treatment situation like this, they will partially clean the water. I'm not exactly sure what the jargon is, but my understanding is maybe it's a word like a skimmer plant or something like that, that I got the impression it takes off most of the watery part and sends the poopy part down the pipe, whereas the watery part has been treated to create a valuable. What's, what is it that we're piping? Is it 3M?
Oh, reuse water?
Reuse water, thank you.
Yeah, reuse water is certainly cleaner than, reuse water is clean for a certain standard, but it's certainly not potable water. And I think this is a good question, and I think it's a better question. I mean, I'll try to tackle a part of it, but I think it's a better question that we would want to try, you know, maybe asking Wooten when they talk about, you know, the engineering of it. But, you know, and how the existing, you know, what we have now as an existing plant, what the relationship the existing plant will be in terms of, in terms of, you know, sort of a waste station of sorts and a removal chamber of sorts where some of the, you know, some of the more solid things are removed from the waste stream before it hits the Forest Main's. But not necessarily the sludge. You know, you're going to, you're going to have a certain amount of water and sludge that by its nature are going to need to go through the system. A certain amount of water is going to need to go through the Forest Main.
To pump it.
Yeah, to be able to pump it. But, you know, maybe not some of the more solid things that you're, which you can guess what those are, which your wastewater plant would typically have it. My impression is, is that we're going to try to remove some of that. But I want to, I want to talk to Wooten and have him expand on that. I don't want to get too far into that as an answer.
Okay. Well, it came to mind when I thought of the phrase "pre-treatment program" because that seems like an actual physical treatment. But I guess more importantly, it goes back to the exclusivity clause.
Well, pre-treatment, pre-treatment is speaking only towards making sure that waste producers aren't splitting prohibited substances into the waste stream.
Right. Right. But if we are to contemplate at any time in the future actually pumping up against that 2 million gallon per day limit, at that point in time, it may make sense for us to do some capital expenditures that would spin off some portion of the watery part, turn that into a reused water product and send a more concentrated form of wastewater to Sanford. And we can't do that with the exclusivity as it is.
Yeah, we can do that. Actually, they would be willing, in fact, if I understand, and again, this might, this might be an engineering discussion, but with the exclusivity, what that's saying is that they want, they want to provide all of our wastewater treatment. We're limited at 2 MGD by interbasin transfer issues. Sanford, by their own admission, would love to go above 2 MGD. So there's potential down the line to send more wastewater to Sanford if, you know, if, if conditions, if everyone agreed, if, if there are opportunities to do that. The issue of providing more reused water is something that they are allowing at the Chatham Park reclamation facility, we can produce reused water there. So I don't know if I'm hitting at what you're, what you're talking about. They are allowing us to treat a certain amount of water here and, you know, send that back into our customer bases as reused water, including three out of maybe other people that would be purchasing as well, so. You know, again, I think those are, you know, as far as the quality of the waste, quality, that's the word I want to use, but as far as the substance and condition and the character of the waste that goes through the system, that's something I want to do a little bit more in order to better answer that question.
And I think that is an interesting question. I think the question of whether or not an exclusivity is acceptable to this town is the policy question. And I think it's something that we need to grapple with. I think that if we, in 2016 are, or maybe in 2017, are setting the foundation of this town no longer being responsible for treating any fraction of its waste, that's a policy matter. It's a very important policy.
Well, I could get to that on the way out here. But what it's, we are, ER did tell you and will tell you that this is phase one. Phase two could look at any number of options, of which could be handling more wastewater here locally, it could be sending more wastewater to Sanford, which they'd be more than willing to do. It could be contracting with some other, you know, with an OASIA or some other, you know, some other organization. But this, because, you know, we don't have another eight years to spend on additional ERs and things like that, this kind of gets us to that, you know, to that level of, gets us to phase one, gets us by that curve that we're going to be looking at. And, you know, exclusivity is kind of a, you know, is, you know, is kind of an issue and that is one for the board to consider. You know, and I want to get at that, I want to get at that, there is some language, I think, that we probably do need to address as far as, you know, that 2.0, what happens once we reach that 2.0? I think that has to be written into the agreement and at least the agreements, the draft agreements I've seen to this point, it's mapped. So what do we do when we reach that 2.0? You know, we need to make sure that we have those, that ability to go past that 2.0 once we reach that point. So that'll be an assurance, that'll be something that we write in, I think, or we need to write in.
So Brian, the exclusivity clause, you know, the way I'm reading it says that Pittsburgh will collect and transport any and all wastewater generated within scope of the limits.
Right.
And is your understanding of that exclusivity is that that is for 2 million gallons a day?
That's what I want to, that's an excellent point. That's exactly what I was getting at, is that I think that needs to be addressed. I know we discussed it with Sanford, but I want to make sure that we're all clear on what that means. I want, my preference would be, my preference would be to simply add that 2.0 and then we have to, we have to check in in some way. I mean, I don't know that we're going to hit that, there's no way we're going to hit that. I mean, we're not going to hit, I think we're going to, we're going to hit 2 MGD before 30 years. I mean, I, so I think we need to check in on that exclusivity issue at around the time or at or before we get to that 2.0. We have to have some mechanism for exploring going down that with other options. I guess as well.
Other options, other than Sanford?
Other than Sanford, other than, what other options? Another option. Certainly, they want to do, they want to do everything above the 2.0. I'm just saying that maybe we need to, I think, I think Chris Tobias is getting at this issue as well, is that maybe we can make sure that we're, that we have the ability to explore it.
Yeah, I think the way it's written right now, it would suggest that there is no cap on the 2 MGD.
I tend to agree.
That's not what they intended.
Okay.
Does that mean, that meaning Sanford just intended?
Yes, yes.
So they're not trying to control us?
They would have offered to do that.
They would like to.
They would like to.
Yeah.
But they're not trying to.
I don't think that's the spirit of- I don't think that's the spirit of what they're intending to do, but I just think by whatever way.
I just don't see the benefit. I don't, I think it only accrues to their benefit, and I understand their need for certainty, but I, I think we could strike the whole thing on exclusivity. They're in a position where they really need flow.
I guess from their standpoint, and again, I'm not trying to be a devil's advocate, but to the extent that they want to, they want the flow, they want some assurance that there is going to be enough flow to make this law worthwhile, and unless there is some sort of commitment on the town's part to provide that flow, then what's in it for them? If they don't want to handle a dribble and a draft, they would like to have a significant amount of volume.
Well, and I think your, your word is more appropriate, commitment, as opposed to exclusivity. Really, I mean, I guess most definitely, we can make a commitment, and we expect that to be a commitment to us as well, so.
Well, we're the ones that are building the $18 million force main to Sanford. I mean, you talk about commitment, it's us that's making that. It seems to me that they're just sitting down at the end of the pipe waiting for this stuff to come to, shall we say.
Well, they're sitting there with a huge plant and a lot of debt and nobody to use it.
Well, that's true, but-
They've already made their commitment.
Well, we both have interests.
Yes, we do. We have an interest in not building a $30 million facility. They have an interest in, you know, taking, taking our waste for a fraction of that cost. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's a dance, like any negotiation is. Any other questions or issues? We can certainly come back to this topic. Like I said, this isn't going to be our last, our last, last prep. The exceeding reserve capacity, now, given that, that our capacity is pretty much set inner, you know, even from an inter-basin transfer perspective, the 2 MGD, what they're saying is that if we go over that 2 MGD for two consecutive months and a third month and any additional month, a 12, a 12-month period, we'll have to pay a premium charge of 50%. So 50% figure isn't one that we've argued about much yet, but what they're saying is, I mean, the language here is saying that they want to encourage us to go above that 2 MGD. Really, it's a, it's a, it's a surcharge is what it is. It's a stick that tries to keep us, I think, under that 2 MGD, and I think the intention is reasonable. The intention of that to require a surcharge there, I think, is reasonable. I can see why they're doing it. Obviously, I'd rather not pay it, and obviously, I'd rather not, you know, meet that surcharge or, you know, creating conditions to meet that surcharge. The, I think we're, we're limited by, like I said, the inter-basin transfer issues that we're going to be, have to, we're going to have to, unless something were to change on that, either through application, which is time-consuming, or, or through changes in state law in terms of inter-basin transfer, that we're going to be limited to that 2 MGD anyway. So, so it's in our interest to stay below it for a couple, a couple of different reasons. I think, I think this, this provides us sufficient incentive as well, I think, to make sure that our inflow infiltration issues are under control by then, which I think we're going to have a pretty good handle on, unlimiting how high I is entering our system and how stormwater is entering the system. They don't want to treat stormwater any more than we do. It's just as expensive enough. So, so that is the, that is what happens when we exceed 2 MGD is the surcharge is Improvements for, for future capacity, if we, if, what we're, what we're doing here is that if Sanford feels that there are, there are some improvements that need to be made to the facility, that they'll make the improvements and, and probably charge us for it. If we choose to, or if we notice something that we want to improve on their facility, they can evaluate whether or not that improvement needs to be made, and they can either make the improvement or they can deny it, or they can make the improvement and they need to make one. The, I've, I've brought up and I've kind of wrestled with how, I, I think there needs to be a little bit more reviewability from our standpoint in terms of, you know, I realize that they're going to be maintaining and upgrading their plant. I'd like to have a little bit more control over how that happens, a little bit more review of how that happens and, and how those, how those fees would, would be mechanized within, within what we're already paying in terms of rate and capacity charge. Does that make sense? For others, they make improvements, they want us to pay for them, if we want them to make improvements, we either have to pay for it or they pay for it, or they don't make any. So. Maintenance, what this is saying is that Pittsburgh, kind of what we alluded to earlier, would maintain, improve, and expand its wastewater collection system. We'd lock inflow infiltration, any cross connections, blockages, leaks, breaks. We'd be doing the things that we already do to our system now, we just have to, they wrote in some language, they just say, let her keep doing that. They don't, they, they want us to basically maintain our collection system. Charges, they will, they will pay, Pittsburgh will pay Sanford a treatment charge with Exhibit A on this, the Exhibit A and the Exhibit B in here, I have copies of that, I didn't include within this PowerPoint because that could end up changing, but in a nutshell, the very latest proposal that we received from Sanford, they're proposing that the treatment charge, or the amount that we would pay for 1,000 gallons, would be recalculated annually. You might recall from previous updates, I mentioned that quite a while now, the offer that we received from Sanford was that they would treat our wastewater at $1.25 for 1,000 gallons that we would send to Sanford. What they want to do is, is annually determine what it actually costs for them to, to treat wastewater at the plant and then construct a treatment rate around that. And then it sets up a timeframe to let us know by November 1st for the rate that would be effective over the calendar year. We can ask for projections or estimates, but, you know, assuming that's the way we go, it's going to take a little bit of diligence, I think, on our part in terms of the budget to make sure that, that we can get a handle on what fees we're going to charge and that we're, on our end, charging an appropriate fee to be able to cover the cost. And again, it can be done, that's going to take a little bit of time and effort on our part and maybe on their part as well.
There's a chance that that rate may go down.
Yeah, I guess an excellent question. Let me, let me talk about that here in this slide. Option one, the, I think, option one would be that, that they pay it on, or that we pay it on the prior year audited actual expense. And the, they provided us with some background on their previous two audits as well as their, their unaudited actual for treatment per 1,000 gallons, and we have some of that backup information. But now, keep in mind, the figure that we've been working with up to this point was $1.25. And, you know, because, because it was just a different number and a change, I, you know, Mr. Messick, I, when we were on our way down there, they let us know that there would be a change, a little bit, a little bit late, in my opinion, but in this case, it, it appears as if that, that this may work out for us because the numbers that you see here is for, as far as the cost per 1,000 gallons, based on what their last two audits were and what they're looking at unaudited so far this year. Now, this past year, it's down to 1.02, so $1.02 for 1,000 gallons, which, less than $1.25 per gallon, so, so far, so good. Now, keep in mind, that could, that could fluctuate from year to year. We need to, I think, try to, from, from a staff perspective, try to pin down and be able to predict and work with, work with the city of Sanford to make sure that we're apprised and well-aware, and then get back to what I was talking about earlier, as far as what sort of improvements would they be making, what sort of things, and we're talking about this with Dab report again today, what sort of things could cause these numbers, cause this number to fluctuate? Gas increasing prices of certain widgets, there are different things that could cause that number to fluctuate, up or down, but I suspect that number, by the looks of it, my, my scientific opinion to this point is probably due to relatively low energy costs at this point, so higher energy costs, I think, to drive that out. Now, the option two, that they provided to us is they would give us a fixed rate of $1.40 for 1,000 gallons, which is obviously more than the $1.25 we've been working with. But they would lock that in for a period of time, I guess in five years. So they would be looking to reissue the rate every five years. I don't know how we would go about reissuing that rate, we didn't really talk about that at that point. But I want to do a little bit more work, and we can talk more about this with Dab report, but I lean towards option one.
So, here again, I get the feeling that they think we're, I'm trying to think of the economics phrase in here, price takers. And we need capacity, absolutely, but I don't, I don't know that, that, that the burden needs to go on you and your staff in terms of budgeting and, and trying to do the fancy footwork. I, I thought I heard you saying that this option one might involve, so I'm wondering if there might be an option 1.5, which is maybe gives us a little bit more leeway in terms of planning. I just, this is a total spitball idea, but maybe there's a one-year delay on that price change that would allow you some certainty, a year's worth of certainty, allow our, our town management to budget with a little bit more certainty? It's just a question. Let me just pose that as a question. We don't need to address-
That's certainly, that's certainly a possibility to do that. Now, the advantages to the actual cost rationale as opposed to a fixed price for a definite period of time is that as you increase the flow, the cost per 1,000 gallons, you know, theoretically would go down, because the fixed costs are going to stay the same, I mean, essentially, labor's going to be the same regardless of how many gallons they treat. So the, the problem with it is, the way we've talked about this is that they would notify him as of November, November 1, but it's based upon an audit, which is not going to be completed, you know, fiscal year doesn't end, you know, end of June, so the audit doesn't get done until, you know, October. So that's really, I mean, if you're going to base it on actual numbers in the, in the audit, that's about as soon as you can do it. Now, they're willing to give an estimate ahead of time, he's going to have to have an estimate ahead of time to do your budget for the fiscal year that begins in July, so, I mean, those are, I mean, those are technical problems. I guess you could use the actual cost from the previous fiscal year if you wanted to do that, so everybody would know what that was for sure.
I guess that's what I was envisioning. Thank you.
That's not how to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah, we, you know, in terms of, it's, it's kind of budgeting 101, we would probably take, so as Heather came up with, Heather would, more than likely come up with a better way to do this, but left to my own devices, I would take previous year, and I would conservatively mark that up somehow. And then when we hit under it, we rejoice.
Okay.
But yeah, it's, it's a good suggestion, and I, it's, it's something to think about.
Yeah. Seems, seems like a big jump also from 1.25 to 1.40.
I agree.
It seems pretty clear the way they want us to, to go, but.
But, but the fix, I mean, the 1.40 is not really the issue. The issue is whether you want a fixed rate for, that's going to be fixed for a period of time. But if it's one, if it's not 1.40, I mean, they're going to be conservative, it's going to be more than the 1.13 or the 1.02, so, because they don't want to take a chance on it going down or up either one, so it's just a matter of risk. Who wants to take the risk of, of the cost change?
We didn't really get to the level of, unless, unless you remember, we didn't really get to the level of trying to determine what, what information or thought process went into the $1.40 per gallon, so. I just think they took a high number that it wouldn't, wouldn't be exceeded.
So if you all were interested in a fixed rate, whether it was 1.40 or 1.35 or 1.30, then that's what we need to know. If you don't, if you'd rather go with the annual rate, then, you know, it's going to change from year to year.
I like larger numbers.
Certainly use the opposite factor.
So I, yeah, there, there could be, there could definitely, I mean, there could very possibly be a, you know, some sort of global event that would cause that to go above the $1.40. I think that's probably a far end of the tail possibility.
So I think, as I understand it, if Jones' method is used, then there is an adjustment come budget time, with the opportunity for a budget, or an adjustment when we set our budget based on that previous year's data.
Yeah.
With option one right now, the adjustment would occur sometime after we've adopted a budget.
Good, unless we just, unless we cut something, we would, from our standpoint, there's, there's a couple of other things that have to happen. There's going to be, there's going to be the bill that we send to them for what we use, there's going to be the bill that we send to our customers for what they use. So we, between, between those two processes is how the reconciliation can also take place. So, I mean, we, we could even have some time between those two in order to, you know, kind of right-size the rates, so to speak. But like Mr. Messick said, given the way that this is currently set up, there isn't a ton of wiggle room. But, I mean, for example, we'll have, we'll have a pretty good idea on most of, you know, most of the contents of our audit by the hand of, of Sanford, I have no doubt in my mind that there'll be, no offense to any of us here, and Sanford, no doubt, will, will be able to provide us a number even in advance of that. So I'm sure we could come up with a number that's probably closer to this than closer to a number that would be higher in fixed, but I don't know that we're, I don't know that we're all arguing about different things here, it's just in how we go about setting the rate on our end.
And of course, the other part of the factor is the flow, and you have no way, you're going to be guessing at what flow you're going to be sending to Sanford that you're going to be paying for anyway in the budget, and so, you know, there's no reason why you can't estimate two factors as well as one.
And this is based on their flow, so it's not, I tried to think of ways that this would go higher, but, I mean, obviously, our flow is going to increase their flow, which means it's cheaper to treat wa, to treat wastewater overall for them, so. So I just, I mean, like I said, I was trying to think worst-case scenarios and ways that these numbers here, that you see here, could go up. I think us sending as much flow at an earlier stage is only going to help the rates that we have to pay Sanford. It's kind of in our, in our interest for that to happen, so. And I think we're going to have a pretty good idea, like Mr. Messick said, of, of what kind of flow that we could expect on, on an annual basis, based on the projects that we have coming through. Again, this is, I mean, some level of estimation, it's never 100%, but we want to try to make this as close to possible for budgeting purposes. But yeah, I, you know, Mr. Fio, at the end of the day, that if we have to, we, we could very well go back, and I think we, trying to think if we, it seems like we, it seems like we've had rates, I don't want to say that-
I think we've had, we've agreed to revisit, and I don't know that we actually ever bumped them at that mid-year, but we agreed, put it off at that time.
Yeah, yeah. I'm trying to think if maybe the first rate increase went into effect in mid-year or something, or one. But anyway, it can be done. It's just nothing that, it's nothing that I really like to do from a rate standpoint, because you want to, I, it's, to me, it's neater and cleaner to have your taxpayers, have your water and sewer customers, you know, in full, let's say, agreement, but full knowledge of what they can expect to pay over the course of years, just get this. Capacity charge, I, I mentioned there before- Capacity charge, I mentioned there before. It's a prorated share of debt on the Sanford facility, it's time of the contract approval. So what they're looking to do is to make our payments over a 25-year period. And they would be looking at roughly 3.5% interest. We have a little bit of work to do with Davenport on that to figure out exactly what, to figure out exactly what amortization schedule that I feel comfortable agreeing to at this point in time. But I believe they're looking at, in terms of principle, they're looking at roughly $7 million and change if the contract were to be signed, in theory, by November 1. That would not include interest, so I think, is Heather still? So Heather was working with Davenport a little closer on trying to figure out what exactly Sanford was looking for annual payment on that, so we'll have more to report on that. But at one point in time, we were looking to pay a capacity charge based on flow. And we had Davenport come up with some numbers on price per thousand of flow. The Sanford, at some point in time, just decided, wow, it'd probably be easier just to pay them annually. So, so anyway, back to the old capacity charge, again, that's the debt. That's the prorated, is the portion part, the 2 million of the 12 million. And then the 25-year is actually the period that they would be willing to stretch it out over. We could go less than that. We could ask them for more. They even offered at one point in time, if we wanted to stretch, if we wanted to make lower payments initially and balloon it at the end, they would be open to doing that. My preference is to get below, to get the, I think, to kind of spread the money out as best as possible and have as low of an annual payment as possible over a period of time. So, but we'll have more information from Sanford on what exactly. Before I go back to Sanford with trying to come to terms, it makes sense out of those numbers. That's what, I'm really reluctant to share that because I don't think it's correct. I don't really, can't really go into it because I think they did something wrong. So I just got those.
Just as additional information, the debt is 2/12ths, or 1/6th of the total debt. The question is, when do you calculate the debt? Because obviously, it's different now than it will be three years from now when the line is actually functioning. And so they're suggesting that the calculation be used, the 16.67% of the total debt now as opposed to later. The 3.51% is what Sanford is paying on its bond. So it's the same rate that they're paying for their debt that they're asking the town to pay for. The term is, I think, is negotiable anywhere from 20 to 30. 25 is what they stuck in here, but I think they would go longer if you want to go longer. It is still possible to do it on a volume basis. You could have an annual payment that's due and have credited the total difference.
They don't want to do it on an annual, they don't want to do it on a volume basis, is what they don't want.
That's not what they told me.
How was that?
I didn't understand that. I think the monthly payments would credit the annual payment, but it's just a matter, it's really my.
We could do a monthly payment, but I don't think it's based on volume, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
I think they wanted to, for whatever reason, they wanted to do away with it. I would like to go back to it. I think what they're concerned about with the volume issue is that we wouldn't have enough volume initially.
We have to make up the difference.
And then we would have to make up the difference. And, you know, they're always throwing out, well, we just want to make it easier for you. I guess, I think the way that they make it easier for us would be to just pay us annually. But yeah, we could bring it back up again if that's a direction you are interested in going in. But I just, I don't, I think they have some reservations against that based on last conversation.
What does it mean to make up the difference?
Okay, if we're paying, you know, if we were to divide out that debt, or prorate that debt over 25 years, you know, the portion, the annual portion of that debt could be repaid by the amount of flow that we would charge back to. So if we're sending a certain amount of flow, they would send us a check that is applied towards, the payment which would be applied towards the debt based on how much we were actually flowing to Sanford. So the more flow, the faster we would be paying off the debt. So if we're not having, generating enough flow, then in a given year, especially early, if there's not enough development just to generate that flow, or for whatever reason, flow is lower, then there's going to be a gap there between what we would expect to generate through flow and what we're actually generating. So we would have to pay the difference of that gap. They want to be, they want to guarantee.
They want a minimum payment.
They want a minimum payment. So I think they're a little bit concerned, or they want to protect themselves if we're not generating that kind of flow actually. At some point in time, I don't think that's, at some point in time, obviously, they don't think that's going to work. We're going to hit that 2 MGD in a reasonable amount of time. That's why we're already talking about phase two, or that's why we talked about phase two earlier tonight. So however you want to swing it. If you have any thoughts on this, we can certainly take it back to the table.
Well, it would be helpful if you guys have thoughts about this. Because they are expecting us to come back to the table. And if we don't have anything to tell them, then we're not going anywhere.
In the absence of much study on the matter, Brian, I support what you're saying. Your desire is to have the annual basis, I think I heard you say, based on volume. That seems to make sense. Did I paraphrase you correctly?
Yeah, I'm just waiting for anyone else to comment.
Okay.
That was one mayor's opinion.
Yeah.
Well, I think that would be a better situation to pay by volume.
I think what's going to happen is that, you know, if you advertise $7 million or $6 million or whatever the figure is, over 25 years with 3.5% interest, you come up with, you could either figure on an annual basis, you could figure on a monthly basis, quarterly, any number of ways to do that. And that's going to be the minimum payment, as you put it. And then you can credit that minimum payment each year, quarter, you know, whatever, with the flow that you actually send down there and do it that way. So some years, you might send more flow than whatever that minimum payment is. Some years, you would send less flow. And in those years, you have to make up the difference between the flow that you sent and whatever the minimum payment is. I mean, I really don't see it as very complicated to do that. Translating the minimum payment into a flow calculation is the more difficult thing to do, I think. So, I mean, it's certainly possible to pay this off earlier rather than extend it on if you get more flow.
Yeah, I just, I mean, there are different ways to look at it. There, I mean, you're going to have to pay it one way or another. If it's based on usage, you're still directly billing that to, you're still billing that to customers, whether you pay based on flow and usage or whether you pay based on a prescribed annual basis, so.
But what you pay Sanford, it's not going to anything to do with what you charge your customers, except it's going to be what you charge your customers more than you're paying, seeing.
Well, you probably set up the billing as such to reflect what you're actually generating and sending to Sanford. So that's where I can, flow is probably a quicker way to generate that, quicker, cleaner and more direct way to generate that revenue and paying it to Sanford. You know, and again, I think that, I think they thought it was just going to be easier to do annual. I could go back to them. Yeah, my first preference was to do it based on flow. We can simply go back and, you know, see if they want to come back to that issue.
Is that something Davenport is helping us with as well?
Yeah.
I think the flow equation for me was in a way that we didn't have to rely on a steady state of land development and therefore generation of flow. Because as we all know, it just doesn't occur that way. And so it was a way that I thought would insulate us from the troughs of land development. If that is something that they are not interested in, they would like to collect this debt, regardless of our flow now.
If you're trying to protect them or you're trying to protect us from lack of development, not generating enough flow, then you don't want to say the flow is the way that you're going to pay off the debt. You're just going to say pay a flat rate every year. And that protects you from lack of development. And that's why I think that's their preferred method. The rate was usually my preferred method because I was trying to find a way to get to a lower debt payment capacity at an earlier stage and make it actually commensurate with the amount of development that we were receiving, realizing that it would take us a longer period of time probably to pay it off. They want, you know, they want a fixed amount every year. Whether we generate that through flow, we probably could very well tell them, yes, we'll generate that through flow and we'll make up the difference, but we're going to be, I just don't see that coming off of, we want an annual amount of money. At this point in time, there's too much to say. And, you know, keep in mind, I'm usually the one to say that I, there's very little of this debt that I feel like I'm responsible for anyway. It's not my facility, it wasn't my financing, it wasn't mine. You know, but that's when he starts hitting me across the back of the head and telling me to be quiet. I'm of the opinion that I can understand why they have the need to charge a capacity fee and why they obviously need to pay off the debt on the facilities.
So in which scenario is Pittsburgh rate payer going to be most likely to receive an ugly and unpleasant surprise?
I'm sure I understand the question.
I'm not sure that I've totally got my head wrapped around the dynamics of volume-based pricing, which it sounds like you're saying it would have to be at end of year, even up, or end of month, or end of quarter, even up, to a flat price anyway versus an annually set flat price?
They're going to pay it one way or another. They're either going to pay it when they're generating flow or they're going to pay it at the end of the year.
So they'll be insulated from any of those variables?
There's no insulation. I mean, it's just, when you see a surprise, if the surprise is what's unpleasant, then the surprise could happen more likely. And then if we're not generating the flow, then we have to make up that difference somehow and we have to budget and calibrate accordingly. Whereas if we know the amount that we're paying ahead of time, we're kind of fixing that up.
Alan, my thought was that the per gallon component was fixed.
Yeah, per gallon.
At the end of 2 million gallons, you were paid back that amount. Now, it might take 40 years. And that's where I think.
Could, yeah, it's if we develop, the advantage, one of the advantages, I think, of going on a rate base is that if we develop fast, we pay off quicker. And that development helps pay for.
Right. And on the backside, if we don't.
We don't.
Then we still have the fixed amount of debt we're paying per gallon. So that's where I think we insulate ourselves from downturns in development.
Okay, so.
With the assumption that Davenport has used, that everybody else has used, is that we max out at too many gallons in fairly short quarters, you know, in terms of years, within the first 10 years at least. So based on that kind of assumption, we will pay it off early. But, you know, whatever this total amount is, will have to be paid sooner or later. So if there is a downturn, the economy doesn't work and we don't max out for 20 years at too many gallons, the pipe is going to have to be paid some, you know, balloon payment at the end or something like that if we can work it out so that it is strictly on volume and not an annual or some kind of minimum payment.
I could, you know, it's, I could go back to them or we could go back to them and simply say, I think we'd really like to explore the volume issue and see where we come out on it. I think there's a way to do this. I think I have a direction consensus from the board, unless I hear otherwise, that if you'd like to explore the volume issues, it'd be to be the capacity charge. We can see what we come up with.
I wonder if we can dig into it at 13.
I don't want to dig into it.
It's a work session for this topic.
Okay, but I'd, okay, that was to talk about the actual force mate and the engineering and technical issues with the force mate. And I wanted to say, ideally, I'd like to stay away from the legal and financial issues. I'd rather schedule that for a different meeting.
I'm not sure. What are we going to add to the engineering decisions? I think it's highly technical.
You don't want to have any sort of overview of the engineering?
No, no, that's fine. But I think we want to dig into how are we making this work for the town.
I'd like to do that and get to that here, I was going to get to that here in a little bit. But I'd like to get more into the actual either or financial decisions when Davenport visits us, potentially on October 24.
Okay, so they won't be at 13?
No. They have some numbers that they have to put together and it could involve more than just Sanford.
Okay.
It was my understanding that the reason that we're even down this path was that we, and I think this is what you're driving at, or maybe I'm consumption jumping, but that we could go this way with a lower cost to our rate payers than building a plant here and dealing with our own wastewater. So it was your question headed toward the rate payer because we're still trying to struggle to keep that amount low enough that we don't have complete sticker shock by the rate payers at Pittsburgh once you factor in the debt service issue? Yes.
Was there a question?
Yes. I thought it sort of ended with a question mark, but we've done to ask you three questions.
That's certainly a part of the direction that I'm concerned, yeah.
Are we going to be able to make this work without a huge rate increase?
That's our intention. If there is going to be a huge rate increase, then I would want to reevaluate what our options are.
Okay. And which of the two options and which of the two plans gives us the best possibility of keeping those rates lower for the town of Pittsburgh folks?
Okay, well, I think there's a little bit more number crunching that I'd like to have Davenport do, that I'd like to have them in here and actually present that information. I think they're going to see us arrive at probably the same point. It just depends on where, it just depends on when we get there. There's different ways to do this. You can pay it off early, you can pay it off late. If you want a will payment, just like the pay loan, you spread it out over a longer period of time. And if you want less interest and you pay it off early with less obligation back then, you pay more debt at an earlier point in time. It's really your pleasure in terms of how we approach that. But I think they'll give us some options on how to do that. I'm just saying, I think as of the time that I left this draft agreement with Sanford, they were more interested in annual, in a fixed annual payment with regard to their capacity, their debt charge. Now, if I go back to them and say, that's what I meant, I was suggesting earlier, can we go back to them and do we explore some different ways to come back to that rate issue that we've been talking about for a few months? I'm certainly, I, that's one we were talking about for quite a while. I certainly have no qualms or issues with that. We can get there doing that as well. Anything else on this issue? Can we come back to it if you want? There's not, I think some of the stuff is fairly simple. The meter, they want to, they basically want to make sure that things are metered. The meter would be, you know, they. The meter would be, you know, they want, they want access to the meter, they want the metering information. If the meter, you know, fails, this is kind of a similar arrangement to what we have out at Chapel Ridge and where we had to reconcile the meter. There's a mechanism there, it's a legal mechanism there to help recognize that meters may, you know, fail and malfunction and there has to be a process for fixing it. And so, so this language here just kind of speaks to that. Failure of service, the Sanford will maintain the system. They want to, they want to make sure that they're, they want to make sure that they're clear that if, you know, we get into some of these here, the failure of service enforcement here, that if there is, if there is a failure, that some act of God or terrorism or war, that's not, I'm not trying to be facetious, those words are really in there, that that's not a breach of contract essentially. And the, it also won't be a breach of contract if, you know, if there are any delays or consequences that have arise out of those issues. The regulatory agencies, the contractor may be rules and laws and regulations to change and that this contract has to kind of adapt and work and conform with those regulatory agencies. Employants, client will, we need to, we need to know and learn their sewer use ordinance during the wastewater delivered to Sanford. I could say back to some of the industrial pretreatment issues, right of access, that they want to have the ability if they need to or if they feel it necessary to sample from our collection system to make sure that things aren't going into the waste stream similar to the industrial pretreatment or the pretreatment discussion that we had a little bit ago. You know, frankly, I think we'll probably work pretty closely with them on that, but I think they want to protect themselves in the event that they don't feel like we are doing the job. We can't reassign this contract to someone. Indemnity. And Sanford will, Sanford will operate, upgrade, repair the system so that operates the way that we want it to operate, but they want to have control over how they do that there again. I think it's kind of been coming out of the pot on us and whether we write this in the agreement that, you know, in certain cases where it may cost us, you know, essentially may cost us more money or drastically affect how we, you know, how we handle our system on our end. I think we need to be involved in the conversation. I'm confident we can do that. How that speaks to the language. And then final agreement, pretty standard language for any contract. Can be amended anytime by mutual written agreement of parts. So severability, if it's, again, standard language as far as if there's any part of the contract that somehow becomes contrary to law. Notices in writing to, I don't know why the text was different on that, but that's solid. Again, like you see with other contracts, any notices in writing would go to the town of Pittsburgh first and foremost. Congratulations, Mayor Perry would be going to you initially and you would probably give me a call in short order and figure out what was going on. So that's, you'll see that is pretty standard language with agreements as well, who's responsible for actually receiving the notices and handling the business. Municipal approvals, we have to, it understands, formalizes that each municipality has to approve the board by its, approve the contract by its governing board. We can only waive under certain conditions. Counterparts. Further assurances. Next house, let's talk about next house. Sanford City Council has not reviewed what you have reviewed, at least not according to their agenda. And I haven't heard whether they've had any other discussions on it. They had had a conversation that said, we're talking to Sanford, we, Sanford are talking to Pittsburgh, we're not talking to Pittsburgh. You know, we like where the conversation is going. They have, you know, they have capacity needs, we think we can supply the capacity needs. We just want to make sure it's done fairly and my impression was their city council said, great, keep the discussion going. The city manager indicated that they would be talking in more depth at subsequent meetings. I haven't heard back from him yet on when those in-depth discussions will take place. So, so yeah, we do have, provide them some feedback and any feedback that we provide them at an earlier stage would be helpful, but of course we realize that there may be some more work to do in both our local sites before we can get to an agreement, but Sanford City Council is planning on reviewing it. I don't think they, they certainly haven't heard the updates that I've been providing because I think their city manager more or less discussed it probably the second time, I think, at the first meeting in September. We're having utilities workshop on October 13th. That's where we're going to, I think, get into, we have two different things that we want to cover there. One is the, one is the Sanford Forest Main, well, actually technically three major projects that I want to cover, but two issues, sewer and wastewater and water treatment and water distribution more than water treatment. But one would be the north side, system water improvements, including an elevated tank. And then the other is the Sanford Forest Main project and then also the Chad Park Reclamation Facility. And we want to provide some technical background similar to the work session Q and A informational piece that we did last year about this time, almost a year ago last year. We want to have additional conversations with Sanford. I can provide, I think I have some feedback from you guys tonight that's useful. Please let me know if you have any additional thoughts on it. We don't have a meeting scheduled yet directly with Sanford staff, but I think if it is appropriate, what I can do is once we have a meeting scheduled with Sanford staff, I can let you know and if you have your other thoughts or things that you might want to pass along or questions you have, then you can let me, you can let me know before the next time we talk to Sanford.
Do you have any estimate of when that might be, like a week, two weeks?
Yeah, probably it would be the next two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yeah. And I'd like to have, I'd like to hear that they had some feedback from their board. I already know what they think, you know, but I'd like to hear some feedback from their board and that I can try to provide whatever, whatever I've gotten or whatever I did. And then I mentioned earlier, about the earliest I could get Davenport in here would be October 24th. And at that point in time, the overview would take into account not only the terms of this agreement and what we would pay, but also I want to look holistically at what is going to, as Mayor Perry says, what is going to be the ultimate effect on the Pittsburgh rate payer. I tried to mention this in our meeting tonight, that we'll have, we'll have, we'll have a cost for the Sanford Forest Main, but we'll also continue to have costs for our existing system. Some of those things are more or less known, but what are going to be our operational maintenance costs? What are going to be our rate costs with Sanford? What are going to be some of the legacy costs that we have with, what I'll call our existing wastewater facility? So all of those things are going to be things that we take into account for comparative purposes. One of the, one of the interesting, you know, when I say comparative purposes, that's where we try to narrow down whether or not, whether or not a fair rate is going to be paid by a Pittsburgh customer. One of the things that we talked about today that I thought was kind of interesting with Davenport and I hadn't necessarily thought of it in these terms before is that if you're thinking of it in terms of what is the, what is the current water and wastewater customer paying in Pittsburgh right now, it's, it may be, it may not be the appropriate approach to assume that that person is going to be paying that rate, water rate close to that forever because I think we're all in agreement that changes have to be made to how we treat wastewater. Now, certainly we can choose to do nothing, in which case we're still going to have some costs for our wastewater plant. So the rate that the customer's paying now, given that something is going to have to be done, probably isn't, you know, probably wouldn't stay the same. Having said that though, what I'd like to get at is trying to narrow down as much as possible in overall cost, getting all of those other factors that is at or below what we're trying to pay now. That's, that's a boy's dream and that's kind of where I want to go with this. The, you know, given that, given that they certainly have the capacity to treat a tremendous amount of wastewater, you know, they have the wherewithal to do it. It would not require us to build a facility that's twice as much. I think that we're on the right track with this. But until, until we actually have numbers and data, this is just, this is just an opinion right now. So. And with that, I would open it up for any other questions, comments, concerns you might have. I certainly appreciate the time you guys take in looking at this. I apologize if some of the previous updates kind of came at the end of agendas when we were all kind of weird and tight and we may be hitting that point right now, I'm not sure, but we're not done yet.
Yeah, I-
We've got a lot of checkpoints to go.
We still have a lot of your items and your update to share with us and I wonder if we might take a five minute break before we do that, certainly before we go to Commissioner Concerns. Is there a second?
I'd like John Ryan, seconded by Pamela Baldwin.
All right.
Take a five minute break. Those who can, can you keep listening?
I got it.
Try to do quick.
Is there a motion to return back into session?
Seconded.
Pamela Baldwin, seconded by John Brown. Those who can, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We're back in session. Pamela Baldwin, you have some comments that you want to close on the force main issue?
I just have one comment and that is in reference to the fee and rate, possible rate type. What I really am hoping that this doesn't do, and we've talked about that extensively, is that it doesn't increase the sewer bills for our customers' outlay. That's one of my main concerns. So, and that, that really is. Because I know that most of the time I worry is sewer does not, you know, does not sustain itself. So with this, that makes us in an even deeper situation in reference to having to increase the rate. So I'm trying to, and I know that discussion went back and forth, but that's what I'm really clear about is increasing, increasing the force duration a lot for our customers.
I agree.
I just want to make that up.
Yeah, and actually our water sewer has been solid for the past.
And I remain concerned about the issue of duplication. You know, I feel like if we don't have a system to cover even the most remote emergency under the failure of service or force main air, that it's, that we, if we don't have at least a storage space and/or duplication that allows us to bypass some sort of blockage on the way to Sanford, that, I guess that's what I'm-
I totally agree and I think that's why we, that's why we have kind of evolved the ER to allow our existing wastewater plant to act as that storage and as that group so that, so that, you know, during weather events, during periods of, you know, where we may be generating high wastewater, if Sanford is having treatment ends, treatment problems at their end, which might be a challenge for them to have problems given how much capacity they actually have, that, you know, we do have that ability locally to restore something and slow things down until, until treatment could be resumed at the efficient or allowable pace. But let's just, let's just take a scenario and, and it's a good question, let's just take a scenario where we have a singular wastewater plant here. Let's, let's take our current wastewater plant, for example. What we're doing right now, because oftentimes we don't have the ability to treat all of the wastewater that comes through there, whether it be a combination of generated wastewater flow or whether it should be through INI, is that we are required at times to bypass the system before it's completely insufficiently treated. And so that's, that's what's happening right now. And if we went to an existing, if we went to a singular plant, even a plant that did exactly what Sanford's is doing right now without necessarily going to Sanford, we would, in a doomsday scenario, we would be doing exactly the same thing. And so it's, you know, it, like I said, it really kind of depends on how you want to approach it and how you want to look at it. Yeah, I totally agree. Those points are all, those points are all valid. All of this change is directed towards finding the most efficient and cheapest way without impacting, like I've said, I've got a broken record, I don't want people to pay more than what they're paying now if we can, if we can do it. But, and, you know, change is inevitable. I think that's also another reason why we would be looking at, in terms of the redundancies, I think that's also why we'd be looking at having, in advance of a phase two solution in which we would bring on probably more treatment capacity locally, that we have this ability with the reclamation facility and Chad Park Reclamation Facility, that we do have the ability to even use that in some capacity as a failsafe or stop that method. So I, you know, great points all and we're, you know, we're working, we're working towards those answers.
Further comments from-
I just had one comment. I noticed a lot of, a lot of affirmation, a lot of it's over my head. I'm really concerned about a lot of this Pittsburgh Shell Pay. Just about every section is, is something regarding that Pittsburgh Shell Pay. I haven't seen anything that says Sanford will share in the experience, but I don't know. This is something that we may want to look at.
If you could look at, to help me out, could you point me in a direction that might-
Well, if you just read through it again like that and you'll see where it says Pittsburgh Shell Pay, Pittsburgh Shell. I just, I didn't make those notes, so.
And I think, I think that's a, that's a good concern that there are costs that we are responsible for. They want to make sure we pay them. I think that's, I think that's, you know, we're purchasing a commodity from them and they want us to pay for it. I think, I think that you-
It goes the other way around. I see the same thing that Mayor Perry, you know, we just need gallons of data, product, whatever that they need. I just think giving up all of our wastewater to Sanford.
Well, at this point, we think it's the cheaper option.
I've heard that, I don't know why I haven't.
Yeah.
I've heard that, yeah.
It can be that-
We had a consultant that came from, what, Bennett Black Creek down there that, you know, that told us that was a bad box versus building a new plant. You know, now our hands are tied to Sanford.
Well, I don't think they were tied.
And I think there's a couple of spots in there that I will agree with you that, that I think we do have to have the ability to deal with it. You know, I don't think that they should just have the ability to say, for instance, make a repair without having us, you know, agree on whether, I mean, I'm not saying that we have to sign off on everything that they do, but yeah, there's some things in there that concern me. But, I mean, listen, if we're buying, you know, if they're selling, you know, if we need bread, we got to pay for it. I mean, we have to buy that loaf of bread, you know? They're selling us a commodity just like a loaf of bread that we have to pay for. You know, but, but I think, I think we do have to build into kind of what you're saying, I think, that we do have to build into protections to make sure that we're not paying more than, more for that loaf of bread than we really should. So, you know, again, I mean, we can, we can certainly-
Well, I drove from Burlington home today, and every time I passed a gas station that had a, it had yellow tape around it, and every time I looked at the price on the digital display, which was up to $2.59 at one place, I kept thinking, you know, well, shall I try to go a little bit further and try to find cheaper and more available gas? So, you know, it's, it's that same kind of mindset that I find I have with this. It's, it's just a little bit scary to be making these decisions, and that's why I'm looking forward to the input of Davenport, I'm looking forward to the input of the, of the utilities workshop again, because there were two of us who were on this board, who were just, just onlookers before, and at the last time that that utilities workshop came down the pipe, so, anyway, we'll certainly try to continue to give you feedback, but it's, it's a little nerve wracking, you'll excuse us if it's a little nerve-wracking to us, because we've never made decisions that are so impactful before. Are we ready to go to, I think, old business number three, your update?
I don't need to spend a lot of time on all of it, just as a reminder, some of you already mentioned that the joint meeting with the board and the schools this Thursday. There's also opportunity Chatham in October on the 21st, at 7:30 a.m., I think I mentioned that at previous meetings. There, Dr. Nate from North Carolina State, we have him scheduled, Adam managed to schedule him November 28th to the board to discuss what he's doing as far as source reduction and district limitation of the currently unregulated dioxide 1-4. So you can hear a little bit more about that in no member. And then, we have a date that Robeson Creek Bridge reconstruction will begin, and that's October 10th, and we've been trying to work with folks to try to keep that going as smoothly as possible. I guess I didn't realize it was going to last for 260 days when I went to the preliminary meetings, but that's the contract schedule right now, so.
Question on that. Commissioner Farrell, Commissioner Baldwin, as two of our more experienced town residents, I'm curious, do you ever have any recollection or tales of flooding Robeson Creek at that bridge?
A bridge, yeah. I have not, I don't see any of that on the continent bridge upstream to take care of quite a few years ago.
That's right, yeah. My children live there.
But it doesn't relate to that particular piece of infrastructure?
Unless it's backed up.
I don't remember it ever going over the road.
Are they, are they raising the bridge at all?
They better widen.
I think we want to raise it, unless our driveway is parked will be affected.
Well, our driveway is parked, will be affected.
Yeah.
That's what I mentioned too, that our signage, I'm sorry, I didn't say anything about it just now, but the sign may be in the right way.
Is that the light of way we dedicate to that?
Our signs in the right way.
Okay. Anything for Boyd?
Well, I've got a question, and I, I'm not sure that NC DOT has a portal on their website for progress reports on the project, but as you said, 260 days, there's going to be a lot of people going, when is this going to be over, what's the schedule, what's going on? You can hear, you know, the complaints about what's going on.
We've, you know, this is, this is DOT's project, but I, because we get the phone call, I'm just anticipating phone calls, and so we're trying to follow up as best as we can. I'm going to treat this, famous last words, I'm going to treat this like it's our project in terms of communication, and try to know as much as I can. So I'll try to pass that along if I can get it.
Something on the website? I don't know if that's useful, I know you do a lot of research.
It's, yeah, absolutely, I mean, as best as we can get, we'll do what we can do.
That might help sell the phone calls.
Yeah, schools, schools are supposed to be putting something out, that's really where I think. But, yeah, we're going to have a, there's going to be, there's going to have to be a detour going around and going around the bridge during that time, and so I think it's probably appropriate that we get some information out of that detour, and I think, too, to get DOT really to share some of this workload, you know, we have things that we have to be doing as well. As much communication as DOT can be doing, the better, but, yeah, we'll do our best.
Well, I seem to recall first hearing, it would be a year, and so 260 days is better than 365, but it's still a long time to have...
Yes, sir.
...closed.
Yeah.
And have they, have they responded at all? Is that smaller number because of any advocacy on your part?
I don't, I don't remember saying a year, but...
I have six months.
Six months?
I swear not to...
Gosh, I swear, I thought I read one year, one year.
I was familiar with that year.
Oh, okay. You may have a special...
Which was not important.
Because it was so surprising. Yeah.
Yeah.
Or maybe it was in his, in the, someone's update from, update issue, but, yeah, it's inconsequential.
Mr. Brooks would like them to change the name back to Roberson Creek. Did you have any influence on that?
Take the T out?
No, Roberson is the way they spell it now. It used to be Robertson, R-O-B-E-R-S-O-N. And I guess historically, it was R-O-B-E-R-T at some point because they couldn't spell, but, anyway, Mr. Brooks used to have real concern about the name of the creek, and they kept changing the sign over on 15 on Sanford all the time, and they never would keep it straight.
Well, I guess this would be our opportunity to change the signs, then.
But you all got enough on your plate, about the name of the creek.
Commissioner Concern, Jay Farrell?
No, anyway. Last time we met, we talked about sight lighting and the dark skies concept, and at the time, we said there was a lot of email on the Chatham Park Master Plan about preserving the night sky, and I did track down the email that had a letter from the forehead planetarium making a request of us to consider that, and so I just wanted to enter it to the record. Alice had the copy, and I wanted to give everyone else a copy.
Thank you very much.
And I think it is really, I mean, an important thing to consider, and rereading this letter, that just reinforces how important I think it is.
I heard it canvassing during the campaign.
Well, and that's interesting, too, because today I read that people are beginning to backtrack on the issue of LED lighting, and, and that, you know, it had been touted, and I had done so myself, about how much money you can save with the LED versus the old amber, you know, soft glow, but apparently, there's some problems with the brighter lights, and I'll try to get that out of my head.
Yeah. I've encountered this, and my plan was to submit this with my comments on the additional elements. The concern is, there's emerging evidence that the color of the light, in addition to the brightness of the white, blue-white LEDs, is having ecological impacts and psychological and health impacts on humans. That's not to say that they can't be overcome with adjustments to the actual LED equipment. You can have warm LED lights just as you can have cool LED lights, but, yeah, I was going to submit similar comments, so, that's both.
Thank goodness for Facebook. Pamela Baldwin, I don't have anything other than what Commissioner Pielka has just given us. We need to have this in additional elements. We need to go put this in, put this in additional elements. I think it's very important.
I agree.
Yeah. I'll email it to them tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian, for your efforts on McPlannan Street and town staff's efforts. It's great. Thank you.
If there's nothing else, then is there a motion to go into public closed session?
I have a motion that personally to NCDS 143-15, not last day five, to discuss the personal bill, pick it up in closed session.
That's fine. Your vote is seconded by Jay Farrell. Those who support please give a aye. The motion carries you in.